Hello and welcome to the Kosh. I am your host Timber Smith. And like every week, once again, thank you for tuning in. I appreciate you tuning in and listening. I love all the feedback that I do get. I appreciate y'all out there in Kosh land. I'm super excited about the guest that we got this week. Yeah, let's uh, let's introduce him. His name is Chris Christopher Kearns. Christopher Kearns is actually one of our candidates for the Ashkash School Board. Hey Chris, how you doing over there?
I'm doing well. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna work on this. I'm gonna quit calling Chris Chris and we're gonna call Chris Christopher. It's gonna take a little practice here. All right. Christopher, can you please share a little something about yourself and what is your connection to the Kosh?
Yeah, so I have lived in Ashkash my whole life, lived mostly on the west side, went to Ashkash West, went to UW Ashkash.
Okay, Titan?
Was it? Yeah, Titan.
All right, and you went to west was west still the, I think the west used to be the Indians back then.
We were the Indians. I think I was either the last class or the second to last class that was.
That was the Indians. Okay, all right. And um, please, please continue.
Yeah, so um, you know, my, my connection to the city, obviously having been here the whole, you know, my whole life is, is um, mostly one of the things I I'm passionate about is I coach youth sports, so I'm involved in the community that way. On the, on the board of Ashkash United, I help coach a lot of different sports, soccer, basketball, wrestling.
Oh man, you're doing the whole gambit. That's, you know what, I'm gonna be honest, as somebody who has done a little, and when I say a little, I do mean a little bit of coaching. I was lucky enough, my daughter played a lot of soccer. She played soccer since the age of four. And um, kinda came up from OIS, OISC all the way, you know, played United and then for UW Ashkash was a Titan. I did some coaching in OISC back in the day, might've won a Soccer Saturday or two, you know, I love that. That was such fun and fantastic and amazing community camaraderie, you know? You done some Soccer Saturdays?
Have not, didn't, didn't play soccer as a kid, so I wasn't a part of it, knew all about it. But uh, no, my kids never played OISC. We jumped right into Ashkash United. They had started their, their rec league, so we had went that route, went to the academy and uh, and then I got the pleasure of coaching my son's U11 select team, which was the first travel team, you know, at his age bracket, when he could actually travel around and place and, and we had an amazing team, amazing group of parents. It was a, it was a really fun experience.
Those travel teams are cool. That's a, that is a good time getting on the road. You get you a nice group of parents, find you some nice places to eat.
That's exactly it. Y'all hang out in the hotel at the pool together. It's, it's fun.
Yeah, I, that's where I drew the line because I don't swim, but uh, nonetheless, I do, I do understand what you're saying. I do miss that. Um, let me just give a quick shout out to all of our, our, those soccer connections in Ashkash. Cause soccer, soccer is big here and, and I think it's important for our youth. So uh, shout out to OISC, shout out to United, shout out to our Y, shout out to everyone. And a special shout out to all his parents who out there who take on coaching because coaching is no joke. It is underappreciated.
It's, it's challenging at times. It's a lot of fun, very rewarding. But uh, yeah, it's a, still a fun experience. I enjoy every day.
Yes, and let me, let me give something else to those parents out there who want to jump on the coach. You can coach too.
Exactly. I used to, I used to ref at the Y when I was um, my college age, we would, I would ref, you know, flag football, basketball and all sorts of stuff. And even as, you know, when you're the ref, you, you hear it even more. You get the parents yelling and complaining.
Oh, I could never be a ref. That's gotta be the most unappreciated volunteer or well, you do get paid as a ref sometimes, but I mean, not enough. No doubt about that. All right, you ready to jump into the first segment?
Absolutely.
All right, first segment is called What in the World Is Going On With? You start your, you start with that phrase and you end with a topic that's near and dear.
So what in the world is going on with, with vaccines? So I work, I work in, in healthcare. I'm a business office manager of a surgery center. So we are, you know, paying attention to that stuff intimately, you know, looking at the data, making sure that we are doing what we can to stay safe. And um, you know, vaccines are um, right now, you know, an important part of us getting back to, to normalcy, to keeping our community safe. And uh, as somebody who's gotten it a while back, I was lucky enough, I had no side effects of any kind. Um, but even so, the side effects are minor compared to the negative impacts that, you know, COVID can cause people. So, you know, I'm a big fan. I want as many people to, to trust the science, um, to, to get those vaccines as, as soon as we can. And uh, you know, try to, to get back to somewhat of a normal life as soon as possible.
I'm with you. I'm all about it. I'm, I've been lucky enough to get my first shot. Um, I'm eager for the second shot. If you've listened to a past episode, I've, I've come around. I didn't start in a place of necessarily wanting to get the vaccine, but I've come around to it. And now that I'm in the place, uh, can I just get it? Can we, can we just make that happen? Christopher, let me ask you, what is, what is your feeling of our community and their attitudes towards the vaccine? Do you think, do you think Ashkash um, in, in the surrounding area for the most part are, are having a good attitude towards the vaccine?
I guess I don't know the numbers. I know I hear certain people that are still hesitant. I have family members that still, I, I don't know where the distrust comes in, you know, because we, most of us have vaccines in our body for, for most things, right? Smallpox, polio, that's kind of stuff went away when we started to, you know, vaccinate, you know, and, and now we have all sorts of other stuff. And we to the point where when I was a kid, I had to deal with chicken pox and actually got shingles at a young age. Now we have vaccines for that stuff and our kids get vaccinated, but right now there's such a distrust even out there. It seems like it's a, it's a fairly substantial group, you know, of people um, that, that feel that way. I, I, we had some incredibly smart people that put together these vaccines and I did a lot of research, listening to and reading the articles about how they tested it, what they did. And even though it was a fast process, it was incredible. You know, what, what these people went through and what they did to, to help the world, you know?
Well, yeah, I mean, if the whole world comes together to concentrate on something, that's going to cut time down. I'm, I'm, I'm with you on that. I, I think the only difference this time was politics got into this and instead of um, just there being a universal consensus of the safety of our citizenry, right? And the safety of America and the safety of anyone, uh, citizen or not citizen that's living here, um, was lost in there. But that should have, that should have been the primary messaging regardless of belief party or anything else. This is just about, about health and safety.
Yeah, it's the same thing that, you know, masks, you know, I mean, politics got in the way of some things that you know, the evidence is there for masks save lives, vaccines, you know, save lives. And um, it's unfortunate, unfortunate that there's a place for politics, you know, we can talk about tax rates and, and how we respond to activities and things when it comes to that. But when it's the life and death, literally, you know, I, I would, I got disappointed to see that, you know, it was, it, it was definitely difficult to watch, um, because I think a lot of people even for the last year for the messaging has then filtered into vaccines and there's, there's a distrust there that I hope we get over. I do.
I'm hoping so too. I, I'm not quite sure where we're at and like you, I, I hear a little bit of all over the spectrum about it. But I do think to me, there might be as more and more people do it, I think it's influencing some of the other people who were questioning it. And I also think that, let's be honest, we're all tired of living like this. I, I, I think we're so eager for normalcy. I think some people are gonna go get the shot because they just want to get back to things being how things were.
Yep, no, I, I agree. You know, my sons have a, has a birthday coming up and I was hoping that, and, and we're not to the place where everybody can get vaccinated, but we're almost there, you know, like if his birthday was in a month or two, there's a good chance we could actually have a fairly normal birthday. If all the adults in the room had been vaccinated, we're just not quite there yet, but.
Correct. I'm with you on that.
He missed his birthday last year too, you know, the way it happened, it was like, everything started shutting down and you're thinking, is this really gonna, oh come on, we can't have to cancel his birthday. And then you're like, actually, I think we have to, you know, like, we have to. It just kind of happened within, within days and it was just uh, you know, a lot, but.
Yeah, I had that lull period too, like when everything was really shutting down and it was starting like at the beginning of March and mid-March was like when the hard line was drawn. And I was still trying to figure out, like, is this really like, you know, because I just don't think I think they were still exploring everything, right? And they weren't quite sure what to tell the public. Um, I think the game changer would have been if they would have told the public that this COVID was airborne. I think a lot of people would have been like, uh, give me a mask and I'm gonna sit home. And you know, that took a while for that to come out.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a huge college basketball fan, you know, watching the NCAA tournament is, is my favorite thing. And um, I look forward to the next, you know, four days, including today, five days when the games start, but.
You're not that guy who takes off work to just sit and watch uh.
That's, that's, that's my time. I uh, everybody does something different, you know, they, some guys like to take time off for hunting and fishing and for me, it's basketball.
I respect that. I got a lot of friends who that this is their time of year, they, it all shuts down and it's almost like hunting. Yep, you know, college basketball time, there's those who hunt and there's those who, and when, when it's uh, time for the tourney, they, they don't play.
Till last year when I canceled, it was, it was devastating. It was, it was the right thing to do and I can acknowledge that, but I can still be hurt by the fact that, you know, it, it, everything shut down, you know, not only college basketball, but the world kind of went on freeze for about two and a half months before things started opening back up and you know, it's, it's important. Like for me, when you talk about basketball in my time, I think it's important for people in general, I don't think it's talked about enough, but people to take time for themselves, whatever that is, you know, the self-care is just, you know, along with mental health, it's stuff that, what makes you happy, you know, what can you do to, to recharge your own batteries, you know, because if all you do is take vacations that you're traveling with your family, you know, sometimes that's a lot of stress. That sometimes that's more stress than the work itself, so.
Oh my God, you need a vacation from the vacation. So I, I, I totally agree with you on that. I think um, you know, there was, there's of course, this, what has happened this past year has had a set of negatives, but I also think there's some positives you can pull out of this. And I think um, I think there was recognition that people need to spend more time with their families. I think the slowing down of life was really nice. You know, because you, everything slowed down and I felt like everything was moving so fast. You know, for, for, you know, you're multitasking everything, you're running here, doing this, dropping, you know, you're doing like a thousand things and this forced everything to kind of just put the brakes on and give you time to breathe and think and have a reset. And I think as Americans, we needed that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I got kids that are eight and 12 and sometimes the pressure on making sure your kids in every activity and at every, I, you know, every place, every practice, every game, are they in everything? Are you doing everything you can for them? It's, it, it is overwhelming. And, and you want to make sure that as a parent ultimately that we're setting our kids up to be good people. And I think that sometimes maybe, you know, you lose track of that. And even the most well-intentioned people like myself sometimes lose track of what's really the focus here. Because the chances of them getting scholarships for their sports or being professional athletes is somewhere between slim and none. And right, you know, I want to have good people that are able to, you know, make the, make the world a better place when they get there. And I think that this year has, has maybe helped some people realize, you know, that and, and learned more focus on, on those kinds of things. So I, I agree.
Yeah, I, I agree with you and being one of those parents who used to have that dream of having a child who might make D1 in college. Uh, that's a hard road to hoe and an expensive one. Because you, the camps and all the other things that have to, you have to invest into the, into that scenario, that's, that's not easy by any means. I, I'm gonna have to agree with you 100%. All right, um, my What in the World Is Going On With? Is What in the World Is Going On With This Mass Murder That Just Happened Um, In Georgia? For our Asian brothers and sisters. That, that just hurts. It hurts and I just, it, it leaves me speechless and for watching at least where it's at right now. For there to try to be a a narrative that this isn't, doesn't have anything to do with race, you gotta be kidding. Don't do that. Don't respect those, don't disrespect those people's lives like that. It, it, you don't just happen to kill this many people of a certain race that is a minority race. They all, almost all of them, and, and I'm, they're still leaking information at this point, but I do believe out of the eight, six were, were Asian women. And you try to say this isn't anything to do with race. So um, it does. I want people to, out there to know that I, I am, I am quite sure that our Asian brothers and sisters out there feel some kind of way. I understand how you feel because uh, there's been incidents in the past that have uh, made me as a, as a black man feel some kind of way. And um, just want you to know, uh, we at the Kosh here, you're in our thoughts. We're with you, we're supporting you, you know?
And um, yeah, it's, it's important to realize that racism affects a lot of people in our culture and our society. And, and it's, you know, I was reading some articles after that happened when you talk about, you know, there's stereotypes and stereotypes are crushing to racism. You think, you know, you hear Asian American, you, you think, a lot of people think one thing, you know, they're, they're not hurting, you know, that they're um, and then you see situations like this where, you know, things, the stereotypes can be very harmful. You know, to people and, and to not shed light on, on the real situations that are happening. And it's unfortunate for the situation to happen, but I mean, it's, it's important for people to, to realize what's happening out there and to, to be aware. You know, and, you know, for, for me, education is so important and for my kids and, and sometimes there's not a whole lot you can do other than show your family and show your kids the right way to be, as we talked earlier, you know, like trying to make your kids good people and to make sure that, you know, these feelings don't go to the next generation, that these ideas get, you know, talked about and brought into the open. And it's, it's definitely, you know, sad and, and crushing. I mean, I, I just hope that, I hope that people can learn from this.
I just need people to stop doing this. You know what I'm saying? That's um, the, there is a, I saw something that was like, stop the Asian hate. No, stop the mass killings. Let's not, that's where the focus should be. The focus should be at that point. Let's not put it on the, the, the side of the victims. Let's put it where it should be, the aggressors. Stop it. That's where it should be. And if you're going to address anything, address the aggressive side of, of this problem that continues to happen.
I, I, I absolutely agree. And, and for me, it's like trying to, you know, where, where, where did it go wrong that people are this angry, this aggressive, this willing to harm other people? And, and, and that's, that needs to stop. It needs to change. It needs to change immediately. And you know, I, 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 I hope that we, you know, I'm not sure the people that need to hear it, hear it when things happen, you know, but you know, the, the, it's, it's just not okay to treat anybody like that.
Well, I think we have a problem in America where if it's not in our house, we, we tend to close our eyes to it. Or we don't think it, it, you know, you might look at it and say, oh, that's horrible, but that's where you, where, where it stops. You know, but it affects us all. It trinkles into places and, and how do you know that you're not going to be the next um, subpopulation hate category? It doesn't take much. The next subpopulation hate court category, and I say this because Christopher over here is sitting with a very clean cut head, much like mine, so we're both bald brothers in, in, in crime right now. And what if that's the new hate category? What if bald men is the new hate category? And somebody has, feels some kind of way and they want to go out and, and man, and I know that seems far-fetched, but it's all far-fetched, right? But it's that simple. It's people picking categories of things they don't like and going out and doing destructive, harmful things.
It's, yeah, I, the, for a lot of people, it's, it's, it's fear. It's, it's, you know, they're, they're angry about things. And to, to take it to that point, I mean, it's, it's, it's definitely terrifying because where, where will it go next? And you know, Ashkash is more diverse than people realize, you know, I mean, I look at the school district and I didn't realize until you see the numbers that, you know, when I was a, a, in 1999, I graduated high scho, high school from Ashkash West. I swear there's probably a couple um, black students in the whole school, you know, there, there, it wasn't the most diverse. And now overall, there's 26% of our district is not white.
That's right.
That's, that's significant. That's a big um, amount of people. So I, I think, you know, people um, in our community, when you said it doesn't happen in our house, we don't realize it. And I think people don't realize that it might not be in their house right now, but it might be in the house next to them. You know, our, our, it's so diverse that we need to stand together and um, it, you know, we're, we're a small community compared to a lot of places, you know? We're, we're big and we're small. We're kind of in that middle ground, 60 some thousand, almost 70,000 people with the third largest university in the state. You know, we, we got a lot of, of diversity here that um, I hope that people do start looking around and realizing that, you know, this stuff is, is here, we just may not realize, you know?
Well, I, I think people may realize, but they're ignoring it. And I, I agree with you 100%. It may not be, uh, like you said, it may not be in your house, but it's in your neighborhood. Because uh, that's, that's how it works because right now I've been in Ashkash since 92. And I've watched the diversity transitions that have happened here. And um, you can't tell me everybody's neighborhood isn't changing in some type of capacity, right? There, I mean, there's, there's still a lot of neighborhoods who may not have much diversity in them, but there are many that do all over the region. So I mean, it's something to think about. All right. That was, that's a tough subject, you know, but I, I think it's a necessary subject.
Yeah, I, for, for myself, like I, I look around the world, we talk about that and, and everything, it's just, you know, the world needs more empathy. You know, needs more people asking questions and, and um, wanting to understand and wanting to be there for our fellow people.
Can't, can't agree more. All right, ready to jump into the next segment?
Absolutely.
All right, we're jumping into word associations. I'm gonna throw some words at you, Christopher, and you're going to uh, tell me what comes to your mind.
Will do.
All right, so food.
So well, food, I mean, with the NCAA tournament around the corner, I'm thinking about a lot of, a lot of fun food to watch some, some basketball games with. So um, one of my favorites, uh, pizza is always a, a big one, but we go to Chicago a lot. Lou Malnati's Pizza down in Chicago is my favorite.
Is that a deep dish?
It's a deep dish, yeah.
Is it like the super, super deep dish?
It's, it's, it's good. It's big. Yeah, it's uh, it's, it's got the, I'm not a chunky tomato kind of guy, but their chunky tomatoes are so soft. You just touch them with the fork and they just melt for you. It's.
Oh, I'm feeling that, okay?
We, we come home with frozen ones. We can uh, load up the cooler and bring some home. It's not the same as fresh in the restaurant, but it's, it's pretty good. So if I make a few of those over the next few days.
Okay, all right. Do you got a favorite pizza joint in uh, the Kosh?
So what we did when, when uh, last March, when everything shut down, we decided that we were going to try every pizza, local pizza place in the area. So Ashkash.
I'm liking that. That's a, that sounds like a challenge. So you're, so you're speaking from uh, what I will call a professional tasting opinion.
We went, we went all the way up to Kekana. We, we did Appleton. I work up in Nina, Appleton area. We tried a lot of them up there. We tried a ton of them in Ashkash. And if, if there's any that I missed, I, you know, apologize. We've been, we've been getting out there, but I guess in, in Ashkash, we uh, you know, I don't want to leave anybody out, but you know, Dr. Benzi's is probably one of our favorites, West End.
No doubt, no doubt.
You know, so we've, we've tried a lot. We've tried Cristiano's. My son asked for Legends the other day. We want to go back there. So we're trying to, we're trying to make sure with the way the restaurants and everything we're going and, and people struggling for business and sit-down business that we were staying local and, and trying to, to do that. So there's a lot of great pizza places in the city though.
Yeah, no doubt. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna have to give a shout out. Uh, I definitely did Legends Deep Dish. That's doggone good Deep Dish. Legends you got going on there. I had to give them a big old shout out. And uh, me and my family, we kind of did the same thing during this time period where we, you know, we were trying to support local and, and um, and make sure we, we want, we want some of our businesses to be around after this is all said and done. I'm, two of my favorites, we're lost uh, big time. We lost Cranky Pats, which, oh my God, I love Cranky Pats. I love everything about them, their, the, the staff, the, the people that were on the other side of the uh, bar, the servers, everything. And um, and Durango's. Durango's hands down was the most affordable Mexican lunch in town that tasted really good. That I, that was my go-to. I felt good about it. I could take anybody. That was the business lunch go-to like, and nobody was ever disappointed at Durango's. It was simple. It was fast. It was consistent. I never had a bad plate, a bad meal there. I liked that joint. Yeah, all right. Shout out to Durango's and Crankies. All right. Next one, cocktail beer.
So it, it's strange for someone in Wisconsin, but I actually don't drink alcohol. So I don't uh, I don't have a go-to when it comes to that um, cocktail or beer. So I'm more of a, just a, I don't even drink soda. It's mostly water, maybe a, maybe a chai tea, but.
Man, Christopher, you're making me feel real bad over here. Like, I'm, I'm, I feel like I need to start watching my diet and stuff.
No ju, no judgment. People, people like it and uh, I, more power to them. I just uh.
Not your thing.
It's not my thing.
Okay, fair enough. Netflix.
Yeah, so we, we spent some time on, on Netflix, watching some shows. I think um, we just, we just got done watching a movie called Yesterday last night with the kids. That was pretty good. But uh, um, parents who always said no to their kids. So for one day, they said yes to everything.
Yeah.
So it was uh, had Jennifer Garner in it as the mom. It wa, it was pretty good. Yeah, they have a, I think we spend more of our time though on, on Disney Plus. You know, my kids uh, you know, a lot of the movies are bringing out a lot of new shows, you know, we, we watched, we're big Star Wars fans. So we watched Mandalorian, you know, and watched the last season when they released for Clone Wars. If anybody's got a chance, the new Raya and the Last Dragon movie that came out on Disney Plus is fantastic. So I think we spend more of our time that way, but uh.
Yeah, now, hey, anything that's streaming, I just uh, Netflix is kind of like Kleenex.
Yeah, it sure is.
You know, no one says tissue. So when you're talking streaming, people just say the word Netflix and hopefully they take it wherever they go. But uh, I'm with you. I don't have Disney Plus yet, but I, I keep hearing about it and it makes me kind of curious enough that I'm, I'm not quite sure if I'm ready to invest in it. But it seems like there's a lot of good stuff on there that people really, really like.
Yeah, another series I had watched, I just found, um, found it on ESPN Plus. Chris Paul had done, um, he's doing uh, focus on some of the HBCUs. Okay, and so he's um, North Carolina Central, Lovell Moten is the coach at North Carolina Central. He's, he's amazing. And so I've heard him on interviews before and he's, he is, Chris Paul and him kind of produced this, I think. And, and so they interviewed some other people who went to some different HBCUs that are popular, including Spike Lee. Right, but they're, they're documenting their basketball season this year. They've had five episodes out so far. So they're doing a lot of behind the scenes work between, you know, for what they're going through, especially in a pandemic. But um, you know what they go through as, as an HBCU and everything. It's uh, that is a amazing show. I just watched a lot of the, episodes four and five came out Tuesday night, so.
Okay, that sounds super interesting. I'd. Okay, that sounds super interesting. I'd I just wanna send a shout out to every coach and and athlete out there who's had to suffer because of the pandemic. Um it's been rough on our athletes and and our sports.
Yeah.
Alright, um next word, Amazon.
Yeah, I think uh I think we've been doing our fair share of ordering through Amazon. It's 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 hard when you uh it's hard not to when you when you can get the stuff in a couple of days, right? You can pretty much get everything from Amazon. It is amazing. So I've been buying some books lately, you know, been into some reading of some autobiographies and and things. Um I think we've been doing some of that and you know, just miscellaneous stuff around the house. My my son's birthday is coming up, so bought him some stuff. I can't say it here in case he's listening, but you know, bought some stuff on uh on Amazon. It's just uh I mean, you can buy everything. We we bought, I'm gonna redo my couch cushions. You know, you can buy buy the foam to redo your couch cushions on Amazon. It's amazing the stuff you can get, so.
Hey, I'm feeling you on that. Uh I, look, there's such a convenience to it. There's times that I'm sitting at work and I think of something like, oh, you know, we could really use one of these, jump on my phone, boop, 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 boom. It's here in two days. Uh God bless Amazon Prime. I I can't beat it, you know, right now. I mean, I do miss nah, I really don't. I don't miss uh shopping in stores like that. I mean, uh kinda little bit. Um I kinda save money this way, though, because you know what? I don't get caught up on the end cap and the sale.
Yeah.
You know, where you pick up that extra, you walk by something and you're like, oh, man, I could, I don't really need that, but the price is so good and it's on sale. I think I'm just gonna snag this and throw it in my cart. So.
Yeah, I I I think there's some things we're gonna keep forever, you know, coming out of this pandemic. And you know, it's you realize how easy it can be not to go to stores now, you know, and so
But we got, we need to, though.
Yeah, I I mean, I I wish, I wish I didn't have to buy everything through Amazon. I wish there was, you know, local places and other things you could get some of this stuff from, but like they've gobbled everything up and they have everything. So it's hard. It's hard not to, and they get you with the prime, don't they?
Yeah.
You know?
They they definitely get you with the prime. Yeah, so alright. Um, next word, children.
Yeah, so I have um talk about my own. I have two, two boys, uh eight year old who's in third grade and a twelve year old who's in sixth grade. Um and I also have a, you know, I got some nieces and nephews as well, but my my I have a niece at um freshman in high school as well. So um you know, I got, I got kids and 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 niece that are, you know, in all different levels of the school district right now. And so, you know, um they mean a lot to me. You know, I I I I like to spend as much time with them. We we go on trips together. We, this past year has been rough because we like to travel. Um we go to, we go to a lot of USA soccer games. So anything when they're playing close to the area, you know, we we take little three, four day trips. We drive somewhere new. We've been to Cleveland, Nashville, Kansas City, um Chicago multiple times, um Minneapolis, Seattle. You know, we we go um all over. And so as they get bigger, we're able to maybe travel a little more, maybe try to see some New York City, Boston, L A, some places we haven't been before. So it's kinda fun to be able to go see a game, but also, you know, hit up a hit up a museum or a, you know, something like that. We were in Toledo a few years ago and they have a the Imagination Station. It's a kinda like a children's museum, but it's, everybody can partake, adults too. All sorts of fun activities that you can do. You know, you're riding a bike that's weighted down across this like zip line kind of a thing and
Yeah.
Talk about weight balance and everything else. It's just uh, you know, it's the fun things you find when you're driving around and, you know, experiencing the country. So it's fun.
I've gone to um, I've gone to a couple of the US women's soccer games, and that is a good time. It's just a good vibe um that's in there. And maybe it's because, well, um you know, it's it's a national team.
Yep.
So the the outpouring of patriotism and the stuff that's that's there is just, it's a fantastic feeling.
Yeah, we we, my wife and I started going in two thousand three, two thousand four, two thousand four. And when we first started going to games, there wasn't the following. There is now. We would be in a stadium with a few thousand people, maybe. Um we went to Columbus to watch a game against Jamaica and it it there was hardly anybody there. Um and now, you know, then eventually when you play the bigger teams, like you'd play Mexico, you'd play Honduras
Oh, yeah.
Poland and Chicago, you know, you get outnumbered big time.
Oh, yeah.
And now the popularity's grown. And so now a lot of times, you know, it's it's more red, white and blue in the stadium. And it's a pretty cool feeling to be, you know, patriotic in those moments, to, you know, hear the anthem and and uh, you know, watch your team and feel the passion. Cause it is, it is kind of a national pride thing at that point, you know, it's it's fun.
No doubt. I think uh it's just a definitely one of the funner sporting events that I've gone to in person. Um I'm a person that a lot of times I go to the sporting event and then I I think to myself, I I miss announcers. I miss, I miss replay.
I've done that at football games when I went a few times and I was like, you know, this is better on TV, but soccer I is the one sport that I much prefer in person. You get a feel for it, a lot different.
Yeah, I I agree with you. Alright, um one last word, education.
So e- education is um, well, I listened to a um when I saw a quote, the the great college basketball coach John Chaney had died this past year, and he coached at Temple for a really long time. Um he talked about how, you know, for a lot of people, education is is the way out. It's it's such an important piece to helping our society grow and understand each other. And for me, took a long time, I think, to understand the importance of education. Um I always knew I was gonna go to college. I went to UW Oshkosh. Um just kinda figured I'd go there. Thought about transferring, going somewhere else. Um but they had the degree I liked and I I was a big passionate fan of history and religious studies. And so, you know, my school down the road from where I grew up had, you know, a fun program and I enjoyed it. I enjoyed it in the fact that it was classes that challenged me. It was conversations that were fun. And you had a lot of diverse people in those classes. And it um didn't necessarily train me to come out of it with a degree in a field. I didn't come out with a degree in finance and I went into finance and I've been in finance ever since. You know, it it kind of, it 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 just showed me the importance of that education to to challenge yourself, to put yourself in uncomfortable places. And you know, for me, like I'm now in healthcare. I bounced around a few things after after I graduated college. I didn't know what I was gonna do. I didn't know um, you know, what I was, I thought about going to grad school. I thought about doing some other items. Um and it sometimes I I wish I would have, but you know, life happens and and you know, things, things get going and uh but I wouldn't change what I went to school for. You know, I I am a better person because of what I did and 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 that. And that's probably in my life, one of the more proud items I I have that, you know, graduating from college, getting my degree. You know, it's anybody who graduates college and gets that that next level degree, I mean, took a lot of work, took a lot of determination. And I think there's something to be said for that.
Uh yeah, I couldn't agree with you more. Uh as in a fellow uh Oshkosh alum. Uh getting them degrees are no joke. There's a lot of hard work that goes into it and you know, at the end of the day, as much pressure, and I do think that uh education has a cultural change that's happening where um I would call it the the specialization of education, right? Where everybody um wants an expert. And jobs don't have training like they used to. You know, training is an expense and it's it's an expense that a lot of jobs have cut. So they they expect your training to occur while you are in college. Um so I mean, uh there's definitely, there's a, there's, there's a shift that is happening. But you know, what college was supposed to do was to teach you how to critically think.
Yeah, that's um one of my favorite people to listen to is Neil deGrasse Tyson, the astrophysicist.
Oh, yeah.
Cosmos and
Like Neil.
Yeah, if 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 anybody hasn't listened to him or found his podcast, Star Talk or anything, I would, I would recommend it. That he is um very intelligent and in a way that's um receivable by by, you know, other people. He 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 really can talk um and put things into perspective. I mean, considering he's talking about astrophysics and all a bunch of other stuff that a lot of times over my head, he puts it in a way that you can really understand. But he talks about school isn't about memorization. It's not about test scores. It's not about being able to 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 learn what year this happened or that happened. It's how did you get to the answer? How can you find it? And I talk to my kids about that. It's it's not about learning what certain things are. It's learning how to find it and how to ask those right questions. And sometimes for me, it's it's um, it's not the answer that's the most important. It's the question that's the most important. And and I mean, running for school board, I get asked a lot of times, what would you do here? And and a lot of times my answer is I would ask the question. I would bring in the people that are affected by this and let's have a conversation and we can figure some things out. Not gonna sit here and say I have the answers for everything. Cause that that limits your ability to then change your mind. And we see in politics, people know they're wrong, they still won't change their mind because it's a pride thing, right? And so I don't want to be there. I I want to be in a place where we can we can change our minds, we can have conversations, and we don't have to be tied to something.
I agree. Um I don't even know if it's a pride thing. Sometimes, sometimes I think it's um political safety. People, people are a little scared because they're trying to protect their position, but I mean, I am such a firm believer that at the end of the day, as long as you are truly, you, the point of a position to me is you are an elected official to represent your constituency. And as long as you're true blue to that and you're not just representing a part of the constituency, you have to go and listen to everyone, right? Everyone has a voice. Everyone needs to be heard. Um that doesn't mean to say you can, you decisions will never appease everyone, but if you can at least get all the ideas or at least have understanding about all the parties involved, that's where, that is where critical thinking happens. And educated solutions are found.
Right? I couldn't couldn't agree more when it comes to, you know, how we uh, I mean, you know, seventy percent or or even higher, I've heard of the of the country, you know, we're we're a fan of the uh the Recovery Act that just passed, you know, the stimulus and all the other stuff coming out, seventy something percent of people, you know? And and yet seventy percent of our representatives did not vote that way. It wasn't representative of what the people want. And so it's, sometimes we get lost between what we're really being, you know, what we want to do and and representing our community and and doing it a way to help people, you know? Sometimes things get in the way of that.
Right. I I think we've gotten outside, like it feels like we're doing teams. And politics shouldn't be teams.
Correct.
Politics is people. Government is people.
Um it should, the party should never be more important than the people you represent.
Correct. Absolutely. And
And I think, you know, we we live in an area that, you know, you know, is is more conservative by nature. But we have, you know, a a Democrat who continues to win state assembly, you know, and um you know, that that's kind of part of that. It's it's people get to know people, people understand. And you know, that's that's a really important piece when you can really get to know people and not have to look at them. Are they blue or are they red?
I think uh Oshkosh is a very interesting um yeah, microchasm of 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 a lot of things, because I mean, the community, I believe in what I'll I'll call it, from my observation, the community has a traditional um conservative um lean to it. But there's a huge university in the middle of the community that doesn't.
Right.
And it's the second largest employer. That means that there's a whole nother faction of people inside of this place that feels. So I think there is a really good balance here where thoughtfulness occurs. And you can't assume anything in the Kosh. You can't assume where people are leaning. Um cause you don't necessarily know.
I think that's an important piece in society in general is is, you know, to stop assuming, you know, we 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 think that just because somebody thinks one way, they must think this, this, this and this. And that's, that's just not the way it is. And social media tends to make people um assume things a lot and not give people the benefit of the doubt at times when, oh, you said this, that means you must believe this, you must follow this, you must do that. And it's like, no, sometimes I just don't like this, you know, but I could be, you know, something else. And I could, I could think conservatively on one topic and liberal on another topic, and I can bounce back and forth because I can see different sides to it. And it's not just one way. And I, I think that's um, we talk at at work a lot about um, you know, as team building, you know, giving everyone the benefit of the doubt and not trying to just assume what people are meaning or doing or or acting and what what they're implying by something. Sometimes we have to just, okay, this is, this is somebody I work with every day. I know they're a good person. If they did something, maybe I could just ask them why they did it instead of assuming why they did it. And and conversations sometimes stop, you know, and and we we get into our comfort place and we we um we try to draw boxes around people and ideas and that's just not how it works.
I like what you just said about um you could lean conservative about this thing and and have a more progressive view about this thing. And I think that's a lot of us. But then we're we're we're, the messaging is like, pick a team. Gotta pick a team and then you gotta stick with everything that team stands for. But I just think of all the people who vote against their own best interests. Um because they feel they're forced to pick a team and and only pick that team. And why not force your representatives to be more thoughtful and complex in how they view their politics?
I know many people that just vote one party for one issue.
And I know, I know my fear shared him too.
And and knowing that, you know, sometimes that, there are so many other things that, you know, would help you maybe from the other side. And and it's hard to to get over that. And uh, you know, I've I've had family members I have conversations with and they like, well, I think this, this and this. And I'm like, well, you know, you're, you're kinda leaning one way on that. Oh, no, 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 that's not possible. You know, and it's like they they just double down on it. And it's like, it's hard. I tell my kids, hardest thing to do in this world is to change your mind and admit when you're wrong. And it's, it's not about admitting that you're wrong. It's just the ability to change your mind. I mean, when I went to college, I was way different in my thought process than I am now. And at first, it can be terrifying, cause it's 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 challenging what you thought was real. And but when you, when you start looking and digging and reading, you become a better person for it, you know? And so it's, I I just, I welcome everyone to to read and study and 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 to challenge. Always challenge. Challenge everything that that you think, you see, you have experienced because someone else may have experienced something way different. I had a conversation with somebody um a few weeks ago, and their experience was they had a terrible teacher during this pandemic. And they thought all teachers were were, you know, lazy. They wanted to stay home. They didn't wanna be in in-person schools. And and it was like, from my experience, my wife's a substitute teacher, and from all the people I've talked to, I experienced everything different than that. You know, I experienced teachers who were doing way more work. And so, you know, it's it's just not judging as quickly, right? And and being, maybe I just had a bad experience. But if I had a bad experience at a restaurant, that doesn't mean the restaurant's bad or every person at the restaurant's bad. I could have had one person on a bad day who had a bad moment, you know?
You know, it's funny you say that because I say that about um racist experiences. I say that because I always say what a lot of people never get about a a someone saying that something is racist or that this felt racist or this racist thing happens. Is if you go to that restaurant and that server greeter just came and they got in a big fight with their mate, their partner and their kids did this and the dog bit them in the ankle and they tripped and the car broke down on the way to work. And then they come in with this, you know, uh uh an attitude and they're giving attitude, that person of color doesn't know any of that. And they're trying to figure out, why are they getting treated like that? And nothing else adds up. So then the go to equation is racist.
Yeah.
But it could have just been a bad day.
Right.
And I try to And I try to, uh, it's something I think about in, in my interactions and things that happen in my everyday is I try not to go there. I try to think, okay, what could possibly be going on? And, and I might even try to sway the situation by inserting some positivity and see if we can make a difference. And that, to me, that may be the tell. Cause I'm not going to say I ain't never had no racist experiences, but I'm also not going to say that all negative ones aren't racist.
No, that's, that's fair, that's uh, and I couldn't imagine, I mean, from, from my experience, I've, I've never experienced that. But from, you know, many people experience that often. And so I could, I could see how that would be the go-to and that would be, that'd be hard to, to try to change that and to give the benefit of the doubt and not go there when, you know, you've experienced that probably multiple times.
Yeah, you, you just don't know exactly what it is um, sometimes. And sometimes you know exactly what it is and there is a feeling to it. Um, the other thing you were talking about earlier, I was thinking while you were talking is, is um, I think some of the, the bigger problem that we run into sometimes is so many of us live in silos. You ever think about that?
Yep.
There's all, people live in these silos, they live in, they live in neighborhoods that have no diversity whatsoever in them. They don't work with anybody diverse, they don't have any non-diverse conversations. And then, so their views are an echo chamber of, of a silo. And they're not hearing these other things to take into consideration. And um, and to understand, I think we do so much better societally when we're commingled and we have a chance to just understand that really the things that we think are different aren't different. We all, we all kind of want the same doggone things.
You know, I mean, the United States experiment of mixing the, 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 the big melting pot, right? Mixing everybody from all different backgrounds, all different cultures is, is difficult at times because people are tribal by nature and they want to, they want to be in their silos. You know, I, I noticed like a lot of times um, people have their favorite band, they have their favorite sports team, they have their favorite whatever, and they find people who fit that mold and that's what they're around. And same with what people look like, what people, you know, are doing and that kind of stuff. And it's hard to, to be outside of that. And so there's a lot of times I don't have a favorite band, I don't have a favorite, because it, it ties you down, right? And at times, sometimes that can be limiting, limiting to experiencing new things when you do put yourself in a silo. And I think some people do it without realizing they're doing it.
Absolutely.
But I think sometimes people choose it, you know, and they, they're like, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna live here. I'm gonna make sure that my community is this and that and, and looks a certain way and acts a certain way and drives a certain thing and has the same color house and whatever else, you know? And that does not help, um, it does not help us with our empathy of what other people are going through.
Yeah, that also kind of goes against the American experiment.
Does.
So, okay. That went hard. That was good.
That was fun.
Yeah, that was, okay. All right. The naughty, we're gonna move on to segment, uh, the naughty slash heroes corner. It's uh, doesn't mean it's a person, you get to choose whether you're putting what a corner you're gonna put them in. You so celebrate them or uh, maybe let them know that um, this isn't okay. And um, you got someone to nominate or organization or thing or situation?
You know, I, I think the, the group of people I would nominate and I kind of talked about it earlier is um, this pandemic's been hard. It's been hard on a lot of people. It's been, it's been hard for our, our kids um, going to school. But you know, it's, it's um, it's not the only people it's been hard on, you know? And I, 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 my heroes are um, the teachers that have um, done an amazing job. You know, I talked to some of them and they're putting together multiple plans each day, you know, before we got back to in-person learning in Oshkosh, uh, five day a week. And you know, they had to be ready for, and even now, I mean, some of the kids are, are home virtual and for close contacts and other contact tracing or, or because they're, you know, sick. And, and so they're running multiple platforms, they're doing um, you know, ready in case things change. I mean, when they were doing hybrid, they were preparing for a virtual, in-person, a combination of them. And um, I know many of them were working just an incredible number of hours to try to get ready for it. And um, you know, it's not, it's not like teachers are the, the highest paid people in the community, you know? And
At this community.
You know, and, and, and sometimes people are trying to find ways to pay them less. And it's, it's, it's frustrating because I can't think of a job that's more important. You know, when you are literally giving your kid to another group or individual for seven to eight hours a day. And they are responsible for teaching them what they need to know to be good people. And that's what we do, that's what public schools and schools in general are about. But um, you know, it's, it's an amazing thing when you think about it. You are, you are giving your child, somebody that means probably more to you than anybody else, right? And you're trusting them to, to make them good people and, and to take care of them and to keep them safe.
Absolutely.
You know, it's a, it's a group that sometimes doesn't get the, the publicity they deserve. And I give them a shout out for that.
They don't get the type of publicity they deserve.
Right.
They get publicity, maybe not the accolades that they, they do deserve.
Right.
All right. All right, so we're gonna move on to our topic of the week. And uh, the topic of the week is uh, picked by the guests themselves. And our topic of the week is North Side versus West Side. Uh, Christopher, uh, can you please elaborate on that?
Yeah, so um, having lived in Oshkosh now for thirty-nine years, um, you know, I, I talked to a lot of people and known a lot of people on both sides of the river. And you know, there's just um, there's a difference between the North Side and the West Side. And a lot of times it's, it's just the thinking, it's the thought process of people. And um, you know, that one side is better than the other, that one side gets, you know, more of the resources than the other gets, you know, more of the focus. And um, if, if you've lived in Oshkosh, boy, more than a few years, you probably can feel it, you can probably see it, you know? Our And, and look, one side, you know, the North Side is, is a, is much more diverse than the West Side is, you know? And um, you know, but some of our, our lower income areas are on the North Side compared to the West Side. And you know, we need to make sure that we are taking care of everybody. You know, what happens on the North Side affects the West, what happens on the West affects the North. Um, and you know, I, I think one of the things I say is, you know, we're only as strong as our weakest school, we're only as strong as our weakest student. And we need to balance that out and we need to make sure that, you know, we are giving the resources equally. That we are focusing equally, um, you know? And, and um, I don't want anyone to feel like they're not as important, you know? That a, a part of the city is not, just because maybe one side of the city is uh, is louder or, you know, more vocal or more willing to um, you know, complain about things, you know? And so, you know, we're, we're, you know, you get, you get, unfortunately, there's, there's a privilege that comes with a lot of people on the West Side. And, and I know a lot of people there, I'm not saying it's coming from an evil intent, but it's, it's there. We talked about silos earlier, right? And, and people aren't understanding what they're doing and how it's maybe negatively affecting the rest of the community, you know? And through a pandemic, lower income people are, are struggling way more. Uh, but they don't have the resources to be as vocal, they don't have the resources to, 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 you know, ask for help. And so, you know, the school district is responsible a lot of times for, I mean, a lot of families get all their, you know, a lo, a good chunk of meals from the schools, you know? And so, you know, it, it's just important, it's important to understand that, you know, we are all in this together. And I, I just don't like the, the picking of sides and the, the feel of, of what it is. I don't, I don't want there to be that contempt or anger against one side or the other. And um, you know, we all have our, all of our sports programs. And you know, I mean, one of the things for me, when you talk about North Side and West Side is, you know, I, I wrestled. I wrestled for a long time, started in second grade, wrestled through Oshkosh West, did, did pretty well. Uh, had some injuries, but you know, did, did well, went to Oshkosh, UW Oshkosh, I wrestled for a year at UW Oshkosh. Amazing experience. And um, you know, what I would um, what I've seen though, is since I was done, is that, you know, we have a lot of different clubs operating in Oshkosh. And you know, each high school wants their feeder program and each, each person wants to do some of that stuff. And it's like, we're still a small community, you know? We don't have a ton of people that wrestle to begin with.
Right.
And so you're running three, four different wrestling clubs in a city that may only have a couple hundred kids interested. You're hurting the, you're hurting the wrestlers, you're hurting the people that don't have practice partners, don't have people their size. The good practice partners in a different club and the two of them, if they wrestle together, would make each other better. You know, it's not like you got thousands of people out and we can afford to separate, you know? From some level, at a basic level, we're still one. And I don't like the feel that we're trying to feed kids into high school when they're in second grade. You know, like I, my goal at that point is to get as many people interested and involved in those activities. And maybe they'll stay longer, maybe, maybe they'll be more interested. And you know, we see kids leaving youth sports at a alarmingly young age now because they're just annoyed by the dynamics that, that are there. You see the parents and the adults making decisions that negatively affect the kids. And it's supposed to be about the kids. And you know, that's just one part of, part of Oshkosh where I see that, you know, we have splits that hurt, hurt our community, hurt the kids, hurt the, hurt that. I mean, it's just, you know, why can't we have one group where all the coaches from the different sides come together? Each coach, coach is a different practice that week or that day. And you know, you get different experiences, you, you, you know, the coach for this group and the coach for that group. One, one focuses on, you know, attacks from, you know, the neutral, the, you know, from your feet. The other one focuses more from, you know, different positions. And I just like the ability to tap into um, all the people within the community that have, have, you know, special skills and not be limiting that by the boundary that is the river.
What I would say, as someone who wasn't born and raised in Oshkosh, would have had the chance to live here for some time now. I never under, I mean, I understand the North Side, West Side thing to an extent, but the only difference to me was one side was just newer than the other side because the city grew that way because there's a lake there and you can't grow the other way. Right? And so that was my whole thing. But um, what I have seen is that of people don't think about it, that whole attitude of North Side versus West Side carries on to the kids. And then they treat each other accordingly.
Absolutely.
And that's, that, that's bad, like that's nonsense. It just makes no sense when, if you're all born and raised in Oshkosh and Oshkosh ain't that big. See, I ain't got no business having no beef with each other. It ain't that serious. And here's the funny thing, all y'all kick it the same way too, for the most part, is in how y'all like to, I, I ain't gone to, I ain't had a different brat on the West Side or the North Side, the brat tastes the same. You know? So I don't understand it, um, but it's there. Um, and it's definitely something that it, to just create a, a divide for the sake of having one, that's just, it's harmful, it's hurtful, it's dumb.
No, but you talked about like how it, it funnels down to the kids, right? And that's education in general, that's how we treat each other, that's how we, how we, I mean, racism, it's, 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 it's everything. It's, we have to teach the next generation to be better than us.
And I think there's a choice, like um, you know, I, I think there's also a misunderstanding about why some people may live where they live. I could live on the West Side, you know? I could afford to, if I chose to, but I really liked the North Side. Cause there's this, to me, um, there's this very working class feel to it where everybody is just busy trying to survive, work their job, do them, do their thing, minding their business, not worrying about what other people are doing. And there's something to be said for that to me. It personally, maybe and that's, this just might be my bias as, as a black homeowner in Oshkosh where I really don't want people paying attention to what I'm doing that closely, you know? I appreciate the North Side because, and I've owned a home here for twenty years plus. That the people are just doing them and I'm just doing me and it's working class and we're all just doing us. And I don't feel out of place, I don't feel spotlighted, you know why? Cause people are too busy working and doing what they gotta do to survive. And I can appreciate that. And um, you know, I'm just not sure that if I lived in other environments, that would be how I could feel or would be treated as such.
Yeah, I have a um, friend who I graduated high school with and he had moved up here right before, you know, during high school from uh, from Illinois. And his, they moved to the West Side. And he, he talks to me now about his experience on the West Side, you know, when he got here. And like, you know, he, he's, he's now, since he's been married and had kids, he bought a house on the North Side. He's like, I want, I want my kids to experience, you know, something different, you know? And it's, it's a different, it's a different feel, you know? And, and more diverse and, and, and things. And so, you know, he wants his kids to experience what he experienced where he came from, which was just different. And so I, I appreciate that, you know, that's, that's it.
I think it's unique for Oshkosh to be able to have both those experiences. They just shouldn't be pitted against each other.
No, and that's, that's exactly it, I'm not sitting here saying one side's better than the other at all. I just, there's areas that we can improve and areas that we can, you know, not be uh, as judgmental and not be as, you know, a, against each other. It's, it shouldn't be North versus West, it should be North and West.
Correct. Gotta like that, gotta like that. All right. Okay, well, uh, anything else you want to say on that, Christopher?
No, I think, I think that was a pretty thorough examination of our North and West Side.
Handled, it was handled.
Absolutely.
All right, well, this is that time of the show where we're starting to wrap things up. I appreciate you all for listening. Once again, if there's any questions, if you'd like to be a guest on the show, please, please, please feel free to send questions to our email, which is askthakosh@gmail.com. That is askthakosh@gmail.com, love to hear from you. And it's that time for our shout-outs. Uh, Christopher, who you, who you got to send some shout-outs to?
Well, I think um, you know, there's been a lot of work going through the campaign and getting to know a lot of people and talking about stuff. And um, you know, my wife Sarah has done a, you know, a really important job of, you know, helping out and, and, and being there for me and stuff and being able to bounce ideas off. Couple other friends of mine, I guess I'd give a shout-out to as well, um, I guess it's one of them. Uh, Joe Connolly was uh, has been really helpful. I helped him um, last year run for uh, state assembly. And uh, he's helped me now with, with some things. And uh, you know, some, some, some good people that I have surrounding me helping me out, so I appreciate them.
All right.
And I'm sure there's other people as well, I just uh, you know, too many to name, so I don't wanna
Too many to name, all right, fantastic. You know, I usually have a good list of shout-outs, but uh, I'd, I'd, I just don't have any today. So you know what, I'm gonna come back on that on the next show. If I didn't shout you out this show, I will definitely be shouting you out on the next show. Parting words of wisdom, what do you got for us, Christopher?
And I don't even know if this quote came from anybody or how I came across it, but it's um, smart people learn from their mistakes. Wise people learn from other people's mistakes. And so I talked to my kids about, at least be smart, you know, at least, at least learn from your own mistakes.
Yeah, I like that one, I, I like that one a lot, all right. Well, hey, how'd you feel about this, Chris? Was this good? Did you, did you enjoy your experience here on the Kosh?
I loved it, a lot of fun, thank you for having me.
Hey, thank you very much, I appreciate you uh, being a guest. To all the listeners out there. To all the listeners out there, thank you for tuning in again. Um, look forward to you uh, sharing how you're, uh, how you felt about the episode uh, at askthakosh@gmail.com. We're wrapping it up. The Kosh.